I'll call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Here. Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. And please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first I'll entertain a motion on the agenda. Received, proposed, or amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Well, opposed. Agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the boardroom or on Zoom that wishes to make public comment on something that's not an agenda item, please do so at this time.
Good morning, supervisors. I hope everyone had a nice Labor Day. My name is Justin Jensen. I'm with Senator Joni Ernst's office. I'm her regional director. I've been here in the past, just wanted to listen to what's going on in the county, so thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Justin. All right, anybody else? All right, hearing on, we'll move on to proclamations. We have a resolution to proclaim the month of September as Hunger Action Month. I'll first have Grant read the proclamation, and Barb, if you want to come up and say anything. You're welcome to.
Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Blackhawk County, in northeast Iowa, over 40,850 people face hunger, and over 13,780 of those are children who do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas Blackhawk County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources that those in Blackhawk County need. And whereas Blackhawk County is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of Food Banks, in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas more individuals in Blackhawk County rely on food provided by the members of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank annually. And whereas the members of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 4.1 million meals to Blackhawk County residents in 2023 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the fight to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations, to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. And whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community. Now, therefore, we, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby recognize September 2024 as Hunger Action Month in Blackhawk County, and we call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Excellent. Thank you, Grant.
Good morning, and thank you very much for proclaiming September as Hunger Action Month. And I also want to thank you for the resources that you give the food bank that will help us feed people right here in Blackhawk County. It's no secret, food insecurity is still an issue in our community. Right now, 40,000 people in northeast Iowa are food insecure. This number is up about 33% from a year ago, actually from 23, 21 to 22. And we're doing everything that we can to try and meet the need. And the more people can get involved by volunteering, advocating, or donating, we really appreciate it. So reach out. If you were interested in a tour, we'd be happy to share that with you. But just thank you for everything that you do to help us.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? This is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. I'm fortunate that I never really faced food insecurity in my life, but my late husband, Logan, did as a child. And it was one of the things that haunted him all the way up until the week of his suicide. And so I see that I've seen the damage that can happen in people when they go without the things, the basic necessities they need, especially in children. And so I just appreciate so much everything that the Northeast Iowa Food Bank does to help especially kids, but help everybody out throughout northeast Iowa.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion. I think we wanted to come up and do a photo.
Okay, sounds great.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? None. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. All right. Should we come out front? Maybe turn your corner in?
Oh, she's coming out front. You won't get the other one. Unless she goes, she flink it.
Can I go in the middle?
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Barb.
Yep, thank you.
All right, next we have a presentation from Blackhawk County Soil Waste Management Commission. John Foster, the Soil, Water, and Resource Recovery Administrator.
Thank you very much. I definitely appreciate coming here to kind of give you an update. It's been a while since I've been here. I want to thank you again for supporting our W-3 Phase 2 project through a bonding initiative a few years back. We're in the process right now of actually finishing up that project. Unfortunately, it took us a while to get all the tire chips required for the drainage layer, so it'd be nice to get that all done. They'll give us about another 15 to 20 years of landfill airspace for us to continue for the county, so it's quite an undertaking. The other one I want to kind of mention is the other major project that I originally talked to a couple of years ago, and we've actually come to fruition with that, is our landfill gas to renewable natural gas project. We got that all up and running. Been running for probably about two months now. We had our open house last week, which was a good event. We actually had probably about 15 to 20 people that showed up. Got some pretty good press coverage from KGN, as well as KWWL and the Courier, so we're very excited about that. Kind of bring that project into perspective, at least, is our big goals on that one was to meet future air compliance requirements. Within probably the next five or six years, we were required to put in a landfill gas system to control our methane, so that we were, we would fall subject underneath the Clean Air Act. With this right here was a $2 million investment by a private entity, by a private organization to make that correction. So we're actually exceeding our environmental regulations now with very minimum impact, a financial impact from the commission for that. Next, even just going through that, if we, even when we did that, what we were doing was destroying methane from a greenhouse gas component of 21 down to a greenhouse gas component of 1. And I seen about this, adding on this biogas upgrading facility, we're actually taking that gas, we're polishing up, and we're putting it onto the pipeline for use as a renewable natural gas. And it's going to be displacing transportation fuels. That's the key for this type of project to go forward. And so it's part of the renewable fuel standard as an advanced biofuel. So now not only would we just be emitting that CO into the, into the atmosphere, we're actually displacing diesel fuel emissions into the, into the future. And also by shifting over those, those vehicle fuels over to natural gas, we're actually cleaning a little cleaner air environment than necessarily the particulates that come out of diesel fuel. So just kind of a nutshell, the other side of this was the economic development within the community. It was a $20 million investment for this gas system, numerous jobs and ongoing. We're talking probably about six to 10 jobs locally that are going to be supported through this, through this initiative. Again, the Solid Waste Agency is looking out for its members by through their environmental plans, as well as through economic development. So we're really excited on that one. Another one I'm here to talk about is our HH, we have our Household Hazardous Waste Collection event this Saturday, September 7th, from 9:00 until 12:30. This is an opportunity for Blackhawk County residents to dispose of their household hazardous waste in electronics, be like your stains, your cleaners, materials like that, that we can take in there, as well as electronics, anything with a cord that's not an appliance, like a refrigerator, something like that. We'll go ahead and accept those details on this event. It's going to be on our website at wastetrack.org. A big one is, I'm short, this, I'm kind of stressing about right now, because we're short about 15 volunteers. So if anybody's interested in volunteering, I definitely need some to make this event happen. This one's going to be in Cedar Falls at their Public Works Facility. Final one I want to kind of talk about is I pushed the RNG plan is kind of one of those more forward-thinking kind of concepts for the Solid Waste Commission. To kind of put that in perspective, there's only about 99 in the country, and there's two of them in the state of Iowa. The other one's in Dubuque, and hopefully we're going to see probably about three or four more coming online here shortly because of this project. I really kind of pushed the commissioners to kind of start looking at, how do we, how do we really view solid waste management within Blackhawk County? Our approaches right now are pretty much still kind of in the 90s. And so I've been pushing them really hard to kind of get them to say, how do we, how do we really make our system work, so that way it's adapting to the new system? Not looking at waste as final disposal and going to landfill. How do we start looking at it more as a resource, and how do we, how do we take advantage of these, of this material that we're coming in? So part of that is, we got five major strategic goals that we've set up for the next five years. The first one is to, we've identified, the big one is just education and outreach. People really need to understand their environmental impact of their solid waste decisions. In the past, we had a partnership with the Blackhawk County Commission, or Conservation Department. Just some issues going back and forth over years, partnership ended up terminating, terminating. After further discussion, the commission decided, hey, we need our own person to be able to kind of do this. So that's something we're looking at doing, is expanding out our staff and hiring a second staff person. One, just to do environmental education and marketing to get that information out there. And that's going to be something I'll probably come back and talk to this board about as the fiscal agent. That's going to affect kind of the financing that we, the financial arrangements that we have between the commission and the Board of Supervisors. Next one is, we're going to go back and kind of look at our community, our Grants to Communities program. We provide monies back to all the communities to support their recycling programs. A lot of that funding is based on an old concept of recycling as pay-as-you throw, as well as curbside recycling. Some of the traditional stuff, it's, that should be best practices now that, so we need to try to figure out, how do we use our money? How do we leverage these, these funds to be able to kind of push some more initiatives that are really focusing more on diversion efforts than necessarily on just the simple best practices that we have? And then we're talking about food insecurity issues here as well. That's an initiative that we already started working with, with the Blackhawk County Public Health Department, as well as the Green Iowa AmeriCorps. We're trying to work to make that connection between food waste. Again, we get 30% of, a lot of the waste going in the landfills organics, which is great for when I'm, when I'm producing renewable natural gas or methane. But again, the point is, is we need to try to, try to recover a lot of that food first before it ends up in the landfill. So we're trying to work on programs to be able to start, start and identify those food waste areas, and try to figure out, how do we first deliver that food back into people, so that way we can help solve the food insecurity? How do we reduce the amount of waste actually coming to the facility? And how can we best utilize this material? So there's a lot more that's kind of going on in this little area than just necessarily grants. Next, we're looking at conducting a feasibility study within the recycling, within the Blackhawk County. One of the major, major educational challenges that we have in a lot of the communities is each one contracts on their own for the recycling, and they go to four different, four different processors within the area. Each processor has their own rules and regulations, which makes it very difficult to have a unified message across, across the county. So that's something that we're kind of looking for, and trying to figure out, where do we need to be at in that space? Whether it be a public-private partnership, or whether it's something that we want to do on our own. Next is, we're looking at conducting a feasibility study to do like a customer convenience transfer station, so that we were kind of expanding out our services a little bit more, instead of forcing everybody directly out to the landfill, bringing it closer to the population, and also expanding out our services, so that we don't necessarily have to do a semi-annual household hazardous waste event. We're looking at possibly something that can be going on year-round. One of the issues when you look at that one is, is people only want to get rid of household hazardous waste for two reasons. One, when they're moving, or when somebody dies. And so it's kind of inconvenient making them hold off and try to get disposed of those two times throughout the year. So that's an opportunity that we're kind of looking at as well. Then I've already alluded to about the organic waste management. It's a significant portion of the waste stream. We want to kind of figure out, how can we divert that, and how we can maximize that without wasting our airspace for that material? So the nice thing is, is the RNG plan, I'm, if I can't tell, I'm very excited about this. It's one of those nice projects that's going to put Waterloo and Blackhawk County on the map. Nice thing about this is, it's a, it's a, it's a step for something larger. So we can start bringing on other kind of systems and kind of allow them to feed into the plant. Well, the plant's managing the gas from the landfill, and nothing says that we can't do something different, is possibly processing organic waste through a digester, and at that point, recover the digest and turn it into, mix it with our compost. Now we got a, now we got a soil fertilizer, or an amendment to utilize instead of necessarily being wasted in the landfill. So there's some exciting stuff that we got coming up, and the commissioners are definitely working pretty hard. I'm pushing them pretty hard on a lot of this stuff. And with that conversation, I do want to thank Supervisor Little being on our board. He's been on there for quite a while. I'm not quite sure how long. I think he's probably the second longest member on, on the, on the commission. He's been there every time I've needed him. He's helped me provide with guidance, and I know he's not running for supervisor this year, so I just, this is probably the last opportunity I have to speak with you, so I definitely want to thank him for his time and service under the, under the commission.
Thank you, John.
There any other questions, comments?
No questions, but just like, it's really exciting to see the, I think, gas capture come online. I know in my first couple of years in office, we did, where you worked with you and I, and did kind of an energy, a greenhouse gas audit of all the different governmental entities within Blackhawk County, and that was by far the largest producer. So it's, it's really great to see us capture that resource and use it. So it's, I know it was the first, first thing I asked you about when you started, and so, because I knew that your experience in Dubuque, and so I'm just excited that you've brought a lot of forward-thinking efforts to the landfill issue.
Thank you. Kind of, I kind of glossed over that. Our environmental impact of that is about 5,000 tons of methane will be remanued annually through that project. So it's a huge chunk when you start looking at your climate action plans for both all the cities, as well as the county.
As you outlined some commendable goals, I said if you'd keep us updated on those too, that'd be great, because like I said, some exciting news for the county.
No, I think that's, that's one of the, well, it's not a goal, but it's definitely one of the, one of the topics that I wanted, is to make sure our members understand that we're there to support you and to be able to bring value to you. And I think that's one of the things that we're lost over the time of the commission, is that we're not bringing that value. Just looking at like some of the processes we have, every city's contracting and trying to deal with recycling. They're paying more than probably what they should be, whereas if we get together and try to do more of a consolidated marketing of that material, we can get a much better price than what we're getting right now in the markets.
Well, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, and next we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors to approve expenditures that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our bill payment today is $185,604.62, and the 6040 fund, we're paying $4,295. There were not a lot of significant payments this week, but I thought I would mention, we are making the first installment of the loan to the Barclay Township for their fire truck. And they did change that amount to 13,000 now. They'll need to borrow more in about a year when it's built out. Otherwise, everything looks to be in order.
All right, any questions, Schwartz? Hearing none, this was a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next, we'll receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Crews are out doing normal maintenance activities for this time of year, hauling rock, replacing culverts, blading. Our staff in-house is working on projects for next year, of course. And then the bridge crew was working hard on, on Big Woods Road to get that small bridge done in the next four to five weeks. I should also mention that last week, last Wednesday, we did, the managers and I did host all department potluck. We got together for a couple hours, and we don't usually have a chance for the whole department, the office staff, and the secondary road staff to get together, so this was a nice time to go over some policies, as well as just spending an hour or two socializing. Can I answer any questions?
It was great to see the picture on Facebook. I was going to say, getting everybody together, that's quite a challenge, so.
Yeah, it can be. Yes.
It's a nice article.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads and elected officials wish to provide an update this morning? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes approved from the August 27th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Suppose the minutes are approved. Next, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Move on to nine, this is other business. A, this is a motion that upon retirement, or upon the retirement of Deputy Brian Sibeliski, on September 14, 2024, he be gifted his duty service weapon as his policy of Blackhawk County to give the deputy sheriff with his duty service weapon, provided he leaves the county in good standing, and through voluntary retirement, in accordance with the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System, established guidelines and regulations.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Well, it's posed, same sign, motion carries. Next, this is item B. This is discussion, possible board action. Discuss the fiscal year '25 contract award to Don's Truck Center, the purchase of one single axle dump truck.
I just wanted to give you a brief recap on where we are today with this purchase. So in FY '25's budget, we had budgeted $225,000 for a single axle dump truck, complete with snow equipment. Right before the end of the fiscal year, we of course put our specifications together, sent out those specifications, and received one bid back from Don's Truck Sales. And I've given you this information in an email, but that total cost of that truck, the single axle dump truck, was $216,932. That was signed by, approved by you, and signed by Supervisor Schwartz on June 25, 2004. Shortly after that time, we did hear that there may be an increase, and it had to do with the transmission. And I would like to invite Blue Sabetka from Don's Truck Sales to give you some more of the details about this increase in the cost of the single axle dump truck that we are now hearing about. So I would like to invite Blue to come to the podium, and he can answer some questions.
Morning. Blue Sabetka, owner of Don's Truck Sales. So approximately a week and a half after we were awarded the bid for the single axle dump truck, it was made to light that the Allison automatic transmission, which is what is in your guys' proposal or truck, that there was a shortage of those, and the initial order for the truck was supposed to be a Q4 order for this year. They said, no more Allisons 3000 series for this year. So the order bank for Q1 opened actually today, but along with that, there was a $6,500 price increase in the chassis itself, the chassis portion. A big part of that, so just a few of the major price increase items, for instance, our 716 heavy-duty frame rails, $725 increase. Tires were a big one, about $1,650. Then we have our base model, what they call our base model, price increase, about $785. They have a, what they call a MI-25 to MI-26 escalator, which is basically your model year price increase. That was about $2250. And then they have what they call the adjusted list, which includes all your options, which I won't take time to go through all the options, but you know, that was about $3,400. And then they had less, some tire surcharge that came off of there, but you know, there's a lot of things that come into play on that. But regardless, they did tell us no more Allison 3000 series this year. I know the government came and took quite a few of those, which made for part of the shortage on those. So we're requesting the $6,500 price increase. What we were able to do that helped a little bit, I know Henderson, they're talking a 2% to 3% price increase, but we already have the equipment locked in, so you know, we are price protected and good on that part. And it was just the Allison. There was allocation for other trucks, but manual transmission with the control setup that you guys use and everything, there'd just be no way to reach around that and shift a truck. And I'm sure, as you guys know, you know, we hate to come ask you guys for these price increases, but the last couple of years, we just never know what's going to happen. I mean, we get little insight to it till it happens, so. I guess that's kind of the gist of it.
Okay.
Any questions?
And there's no way to assure, I guess, this type of thing doesn't continue?
We should, so they're currently telling us that the verbiage used was first in, first out in regard to the Allison 3000 series again. They said, we're not 100% sure where it's going to land, but the first in, first out, the sooner we get our order in, you know, we should be able to hopefully lock one in. So like, say that opened up, the order bank for Q1 opened up today. So you know, if I can get your guys' approval, I can go back and get that put in there. I would sure hope, once we get it put in, there wouldn't be a price increase, but like say, the last couple of years, you know, we don't know it till shortly before we request it from you a lot of times, unfortunately. So we were kind of hoping maybe that was going to level off this year, but unfortunately there was a significant increase.
You mentioned, go ahead, Tom.
Lou, this Supervisor Little, obviously, we all know that the cost of stuff is going up every day. I've talked to some other county engineers, they have multiple bids on trucks. Is there something that we could do in our specs to be a little bit more flexible on what we're looking for in this day and age? I know we get used to certain transmissions, certain controls and stuff, but would it help if we had some alternatives, some flexible specs, that would get more people to bid on them, just the one outfit? Because obviously, this is probably going to be a concern in the future. I brought it up a few years ago when we had the increase. There's got to be, you have to be, I think, a little bit thinking out the box nowadays when you're setting bids up for items, and I think there's an opportunity here, possibility.
I guess what I would say to that in regards to the transmissions, you know, my thought would be the manual transmission. You know, we're getting so few people that are using that in the plow application there again, because of the way all the electronic controls sit along the seat, you know, so that, in my eyes, kind of takes the manual transmission out of play, just for an operator to try and run that truck. They do make what they call an auto shift or an ultra shift. They're basically a computer-shifted manual transmission, but they don't shift the same as your Allison. You know, I don't think you would be happy with those. They have almost a hesitation in between the gears, a little bit of a, you know, they'll shift, and then it takes a few seconds, then they take off. Allison, it's more like your pickup, you know, shift, shift, shift. And the amount of issues we have had with the Allison, as I'm sure you guys are aware in your shop, is, is very little. Now, two, the Allison transmission is not proprietary just to Daimler. So the Allison is available in other makes, as far as that goes.
I was going to address Tom's comments. So if you recall, the last bid we had for our three dump trucks, two singles and a tandem, was received by, or the low bidder was Truck Centers here in Evansdale. The, some of the problems, or some of the issues that come into play, that counties, into play that counties like, we like to receive a truck with the snowplow equipment on it when we get it. We like the supplier, the truck manufacturer and the snowplow equipment manufacturers to work together and put that equipment on the truck so it's working, the hydraulics work. And we just get the truck and it works for us. So that's been some of the issues with finding people, organizations, Truck Center decided they weren't, they couldn't do that. They didn't do that for us last time. So then they had to work with Henderson. The chassis went to Don's. They worked with Henderson. It's, it's just worked really well for us to get a completed vehicle from Don's. Over the years, that's been, we've been very successful with that. They were the last, they were the only bidder this last time. So I think some of these companies have to get some of this stuff figured out themselves. They've decided they don't want to install the snow equipment, or they do want to install the snow equipment. And that varies throughout Iowa. Here in the Northeast, a lot of the counties go through Don's because we get a turnkey truck. We just get it all built and it works.
Kathy, do you have any suggestions that we could do in the future to minimize this?
We can talk to vendors, Truck Centers in Cedar Rapids, see if they would like to, if they are able to give us a turnkey truck. They work with Freightliner, they're Freightliner dealers. They get the chassis. They work with Henderson to get the snowplow equipment and they have to know how to install it. I can't force them to do that. Truck Centers here in Evansdale told us they didn't have people, this was a year ago, they told us they, they don't have people, they don't have the know-how to install the snow equipment. They don't have that portion of a shop. They don't have a shop that can do that.
And I do wanna, again, emphasize, you know, this isn't Don's Truck Sales requesting, I mean, it is, but it's a Daimler. You know, whether you would have been getting the truck from Truck Country, Truck Centers as a Daimler dealer, it'd be the same price increase. And, you know, in regards to other vendors too, I mean, unfortunately, since COVID came along, it's happening across the board. I've got one county I'm working with, they've been waiting on a Mack truck for two years. So unfortunately, I don't know when we'll get out of this realm of things.
You remind us, Kathy, how much is the price increase?
$6,500.
$6,500. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Seconded.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Discuss this price increase, or to accept this price increase from Don's Trucks for purchasing a single axle dump truck, price increase of $6,500.
That was, or probably should include the total cost then being $223,432. Does that sound right, Kathy?
Yes, that will, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Very good. All right. This is a resolution. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Move on to item C. This is a resolution that the request for the purchase of capital equipment submitted by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and directed chair to sign for the same, purchase one new tire changer and balancing machine in the amount of $46,618.13 from Mohawk Lifts LLC of Amsterdam, New York.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah, I shared some of this information with you in the email. So for FY '25, we did budget $50,000 for two pieces of equipment. This is a tire changer and a tire balancer. We balance and change, change and balance over 100 tires every year. As you know, rims are getting larger and larger, 18 inch, 19 inch, 21 inch rims. Our, our own equipment, we can't use that any longer to change these rims. We have to, a lot of times, we have to go outside our shop to fix tire, for example, to have the, these changed and or balanced. We would like to utilize the, in the bidding policy, there's now, it does allow now for us to go off of the state contract. We opted to do that this time. So that's why we chose this Mohawk Lifts. This is right off the state contract for the $46,618. And we did talk with Mike Trynant about this during the bidding policy when that was put together.
Does this also improve the safety of?
Yes, that's a whole nother component. Our, for the tire changing, our mechanic, our service mechanic has to pick up that, the wheel and the tire, about knee high, I believe, and place it onto the changer. Nowadays, you just place the, the tire right next to it and it can pick it up and rotate it so it can then be, everything can be done automatically. The B can be broken automatically. And it is less wear and tear on our mechanic.
Is the old equipment, then, we're gonna get rid of it, Nancy, if it's a safety factor?
Yes, we will be disposing of that equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do you have a motion? A second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item D, this is resolution, resolution that the amendment to statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project LFM-3029-7X-07 Bridge Deck Repairs that was previously approved at the August 27, 2024 meeting, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same and authorize and direct the auditor to make the final payment of $15,156.46, the total project cost of $505,248.55, as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kathy, anything?
Yeah, I just explained this in an email, just due to that app, you had the program, the DOT, that we use for the DOT. One of the numbers was wrong, so thus our final contract cost was wrong. And then the retainage is wrong. So we notified the contractor and brought this to your attention. And we would like a correction to be issued so that we can pay them the correct amount of retainage.
Right, Board. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. This was resolution. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Item E, this is motion to approve the travel request submitted by Amanda Fezremire, human resources director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same for $832.36 for Shari Gallimer, Anna Knapp and Amanda Fezremire to attend the Iowa Public Employment Labor Relations Association Annual Fall Conference in Johnston, Iowa, scheduled September 12 through the 13, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Item F, this is a motion to approve the travel.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
We will be communicating, so next week's busy for HR because we have the all-day management training on September 9th, partnering with CFU. So we'll be kind of in and out of the office that day. And then the 12th and 13th, we will be out of the office. But you know, we'll come back because I think it's just a half day on Friday. So, but we'll be back till the late afternoon. But no, thank you for the support. It's a great conference for us to get to connect with other HR professionals in the public sector, whether it's city, county, school district, utilities. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Item F, this is a motion to approve the travel request submitted by LU IT Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same for estimated cost of $300 for Natalie Nunez, Clint Hardman and Jason Ryan to attend the Iowa Technology and Geospatial October Conference in Des Moines, Iowa, scheduled October 7 through the 8, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? There you go. All right.
Questions I can ask you?
All right. This is a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We move on to item G, discussion, possible board action that the agreement with Pathways Behavioral Services Incorporated should provide substance abuse services in the Blackhawk County Jail during a time period of October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025, in the amount not to exceed $93,000 to be funded with opioid settlement funds, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Moved and seconded. All right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Vicki Mueller. I'm the executive director of Pathways and I brought along Sarah, who used to be my opioid mat coordinator, and now she's moved up to management. Felicia Carter, she runs our Junkman Canoble Center and leads all our peers for opioid and lore. So I kind of brought those two along because they have a connection with what we're doing in the jail, which is, we saw over 300 people last year in the Blackhawk County Jail with our jail-based program that the opioid funding funded for us last year. Our, we have a case manager that works out of the jail. Our case manager did retire in August, but we have already filled that position. And then we also have a counselor who works in the jail. The new person who took the case management position is also a certified counselor. So if you'll read through the handout that I handed out, I hope Linda, did you send that out?
Last month, I think, when we expected.
Okay. Very good. Anyway, she's a certified counselor. So we did have a waiting list for people to see our counselor that comes in and the jail. Now the waiting list is lessened because she can also see them as well as do the case management services. This program is specifically listed as a program that they want to see done with the opioid funding. It's one of the nine programs that they recommend as a program that they, that is done with the opioid settlement funds that the counties, counties and cities receive.
I think it's a good investment of these dollars. And 300, that's a lot, so that's...
It's a lot. And we, I mean, we partner with lots of different people. Our case manager, if, if the client or that she's working with prefers to work with other counselors in different, like with Elevate or with Blackhawk, Grandee Mental Health, we refer them over. We partner a lot with, with Elevate. We partner a lot with Momentum. I believe we're getting one of, we were nominated for one of Momentum's partnership awards for their fundraiser that they've got coming up. So we do do a lot with the community and partnerships. So we're not just an island. We make sure we do coordinate all of our services.
Now, how often is the case manager onsite?
Every day.
Every, okay.
The case manager's onsite every day and the counselor's there two days a week. And he's getting, both him and the case manager are getting their master's degrees. So they're sort of, they're serving co-curring people as well, or will be soon, co-curring mental health substance use.
Here, I see. Are we seeing a lot of dual addiction issues with people that are struggling with both opioids and methamphetamine?
Yes, there's some of that. We see both, yeah, quite a bit. Methamphetamine's actually a much bigger issue in Blackhawk County, methamphetamine and marijuana alcohol. But yeah, we do see many poly drug users.
Okay.
And, and a lot of them are also struggling with mental health issues.
All right. Board, any other questions? We do have a motion here. We'll do a resolution. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10, any reports or information from the Board?
Yes. First of all, condolences to the Tysinger family on their loss. That's certainly a tragic event. No parent should outlive their child. And secondly, I was contacted by the Waterloo Police Department. They've been in discussions with the Sheriff's Office in some of our smaller communities. I'm told within a couple of weeks, we'll be presented with a proposal for a property evidence building where the other communities are gonna tangibly invest in a facility in regard to that proposal.
Very good. Thank you.
I was gonna ask the question, you know, last week we had Ted Garnett here and he mentioned hearing from our departments, their top three priorities or what they'd like us to consider. I wondered if we shouldn't, don't have to set it now, but maybe set a work session or something so that we'd all hear the same information and could ask them questions or whatever, rather than...
Yeah, I think that would be good.
...to do it. I don't, if that sounds good.
Do we want to do approximately two weeks after now?
You're tentative for the month of September.
I can catch up on some, on some video notes.
We could try. Yeah, that, I mean, and that would be fine too, if that works for you. My other, my, one is just a question too. We talked about the local preference a couple of weeks ago and I didn't know what your timeline or what timeline you were considering, if it's something, just so I would do some research or talk.
Sure, yeah.
That was all, it was so soon, I wanted to give...
No, I don't, I don't envision it being horribly soon. I need to schedule some sit downs with other departments.
Okay, all right.
Just to get their feel and then, thought was, bring the policy here, you know, we decide we want to kick it over to policy review so that they can make sure that it, whether it's, you know, this doesn't need to say yea or nay to do it, but how do we, how would we put it into policy? And then, you know, kick it back to us. But I think if we can have a discussion, I would like to say in the next month and a half, just know I'm gonna have a couple, a couple of weeks where...
Sure.
Might have a slightly higher priority than local preference policy.
I would imagine.
Sorry.
Well, maybe, maybe a work session would be good on that too, but we can think about that in the future too. And see in your schedule, what your schedule looks like. Thank you.
All right. Any other reports or information? Not. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.